The fifteenth meeting of the Rock Hill Township Supervisors. First point of the meeting is called Order and Political Legions Stand. Okay, our first item business is public comments on agenda items. And based on some questions we had last month, I want to make sure that everybody has it public, the public comments. Because we know that you have, we are going to be dealing with agenda items. If there are issues which you guys are interested in, which the public is interested in, that you'd like us to ask questions about. Things that you're concerned about, that you know are coming up on the agenda. Please ask us, let us know, we want you to talk about this, we'd like to hear more about this. If you have a comment about anything that's on the agenda, then please raise your hand, come up to the microphone and we are taking public comment.
Anthony Bogner, Clymer Avenue. Uh, item, agenda item number 10, under the manager's report. The discussion question, authorization for joint rec authority to borrow one to 10 million dollars. This issue, I have an issue with, this question should never be on the ballot. The board is elected and this board is responsible for spending my tax money, not to joint rec authority. The joint rec authority is comprised of all volunteers, the joint rec authority has been mismanaged for many years with lack of leadership. Some examples, but not limited to, where did the money go? Or where did the old pump go? Why was it scrapped? Where's the $7,000 that Grandview was to pay for using the parking lot? The latest, a no big contract for repair, replace of a water fountain for $7,400? That's half of what the township contribution was. I don't want the joint rec authority raising my taxes and I don't want West Rock Hill to go into debt over a three to one membership ratio. West Rock Hill taxes are 7.2 mil rate, Sellersville is 24 mils. Sellersville wants to put the pool ahead of paving, example Clymer Lawn Avenue, that's their prerogative. Each mill is 75,000, for 1 million, that would be 13 mils, West Rock Hill mileage rate would be 20.25. Our taxes would more than double, close to triple. I would ask the board to put a cabash on this idea. The real question should be, on the ballot is, should West Rock Hill be in the pool business with Sellersville? And that's all I have to say. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, do we have any other public comments to come up?
Yeah, I'd like to comment on the, uh, where is it? Yeah, about the sewer. Discussion on the sewer, there's going to be a discussion after the township manager's report.
Get to the mic.
On the, on the discussion of, that's too loud, on discussion of the sewer line going in. Before any votes are taken this month, I would certainly like to have a public comment allowed. Um, before you vote on items such as that. Now, for me to comment now on it, I don't, I don't know what to say because I haven't heard anything, there's been no report on it yet. I can't comment until I hear what is reported, what, what's discussed, then I can comment on it. All right, thank you.
Anyone else for public comment?
Kelly Fox, 211 Holiday House Road, also want to comment on the sewer line that they're not giving us information. Uh, they're getting a grant to run this all the way out here, but it's not needed yet. So is this for future developments, they're just trying to pull stuff or somebody's trying to pull down over our eyes that all of a sudden it'll be there and then they can put their developments. Um, then also, I wanted to bring up something that was brought up in the last meeting, which was Holiday House Road, uh, development. And I've been hearing a lot of chirping and it wasn't mentioned in the meeting, very tiny little bit last time that they want to come in from the pool. So now they're gonna come in from the pool so they don't have to do any road fixing or anything like that. There, somebody's pulling wool over eyes because they keep, they have money, I don't know, it's, it's, uh, it, it's our, your guys', you know, discretion to, to let them do it. You know, they want to drive through the pool, does that mean you're gonna try to get rid of the pool then? You're talking now that it's gonna be, you know, there's two of us with it, West Rock Hill and Sellersville, now you're gonna let traffic go through it. So is that, you know, the start of the end of the pool or what?
Hey, any other public comments? I know we had a couple of people come in late. Anyone else going once, going twice? Okay, so we're gonna close public comment for the agenda items. I did want to mention one of the things which is a possibility is amending our public comment ideas to have public comment after each individual item. But that's something we'll have to look at and vote on because right now we do have it as part of the end of the meeting. Unfortunately, when you do that, the meeting tends to drag on, so let them make sure we have a balance and think that one through. We get to announcements, we have our cleanup day drawing.
Thank you, uh, I don't know if you want to pick someone from the audience to pick, uh, two names out of that for our cleanup day drawing? The winner wins $50. Don't look at the names, one.
Shake it up, shake it up.
And give it to the chairman.
Okay. So our first, so the first ticket pulled is James and Sherry Frakes. So, and the second one pulled is Vicki Krauthhamel and Sherry Frakes. Team captain Vicki Krauthhamel, James Frakes, team Sherry Frakes. So we'll give that to.
Yep, and you give away two for those under 18, but we only had one person under 18 for cleanup day. So that is the winner.
So that ends up going to Jaden Sitko, uh, the team captain was Teresa Sitko. Age nine. Okay, next item that we have on the agenda is called the consent agenda, which are the usual, this usual business of the township. Minutes, reviews, plans, et cetera, and that goes to Mr. Lippincott.
The consent agenda consists of the April 17th, 2024, uh, the win, uh, plan review status, escrow, release and vouchers. The action on plans to expire, I would move down to the engineer's report. Uh, the emergency services report, building and zoning report, the public works report, conservation committee report, the planning commission report. And the treasures report, which I will read. As of April, uh, the general fund, $1,102,544.93. Highway aid, $233,726.63. Open space, $1,365,620.87. The park fund, $98,580.45, 54 cents. The equipment fund, $21,170.41. Highway capital, 140.19. Streetlights, $36,591.7. Reserve funds, the general fund reserve, $489,746.99. American rescue fight land funds, $528,806.26. Open space manure field, $41,646.58. Sewage maintenance fund, $208,533.2 cents. Stormwater fund, $13,483.78. And the escrow funds, $2,543,862.95. You also have your list of bills.
Okay, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make that motion.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. I did want to, just realized I forgot to mention earlier, uh, I believe this is EMS recognition week. So we did want to say thank you to Penrith Regional Police Department, to Sellersville, Telford, Jumbarsville, Tyler's Port and also Grandview Hospital, which are our EMS suppliers. I think I covered everybody, but we did want to make sure that we recognize that this is the weekend, that this week has been set aside to appreciate everything that they do. So thank you. Confirmed deployments, we have none. Way to get to committee reports and Mr. Rice.
All right, it's parking rec time. Little bit of rain, but that doesn't, it doesn't make the sun go away, it just hides behind the clouds, it's all good. All right, first thing tonight, I'd just like to request the approval to, um, bring on our seventh member of the parking rec committee, Ms. Brooke Warren. Um, is a volunteer, um, for the full-time position as the seventh and final, um, park committee member. And we still have an alternate position available, so there's still an alternate position available, so just say that, throwing it out there. Um, if you have, if you have gone to the, um, park lately, you can see since, um, uh, April 27th, the Liberty Trail Girl Scouts, um, planted their three trees. Um, so it's right along the top walking path, they look really cool. So that was a wonderful day for them. And then we have our biggest event of the year, which is September Fest, which is coming Sunday, September 29th, noon to four. It is a great afternoon, if you have a chance to stop by, put it on your calendar and stop by for four hours, it's a free day to everybody. Um, we're gonna have two, um, food trucks, those aren't free obviously, but, um, we have a lot of events. We have a lot of, um, sponsors that actually donate to make this event a huge success every single year. It's our 30th year, um, that we're having it. Um, we have confirmed Ferris and Fifi will be there, both of them. So if you know anything about the Iron Pigs, Ferris and Fifi, are there mascots? They're fabulous, bring your kids, your grandkids, bring them along, get some pictures, high fives, everything, they have, they have a great time when they're here. Um, and then following up, we have, uh, Feature Film and a Fire, October 12th, and we're still working on the movie, but that generally starts around dusk. Comments, questions, anything?
I don't have any questions, I, I would, uh, I would make a motion that we do appoint Brooke, uh.
Warren. Brooke Warren, Brooke Warren, right? That was unanimous, basically.
Yes, correct.
I would second that.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
And we have a motion to accept the report. I'll make motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on to police commissioner report.
Thank you, David.
Uh, good evening, I have the Penrith Regional Police. Uh, I have the Penrith Regional Police Department, April 2024 activity report for this evening. Uh, the department responded to 708 calls for service, 307 of those calls were in East Rock Hill Township. 396 were in West Rock Hill Township and six calls were assisting our neighboring agencies. The department handled 29 traffic crashes, of those crashes, 17 were reportable, 12 were non-reportable. With eight occurring in East Rock Hill Township and the remaining 21 were in West Rock Hill Township. Our criminal activity for the month of April, uh, we had seven crimes against property, six crimes against a person, 11 crimes against society and three group B offenses. Those reported crimes included DUI crash, uh, in East Rock Hill Township, simple assault, criminal mischief. Five allegations or charges or calls about drugs, two fraud calls, three harassment calls, two theft calls, one threat call. And one call for trespassing. In West Rock Hill Township, we had one simple assault, a criminal mischief, one DUI, two frauds and one theft. Criminal charges that we filed in the month of April, there was 128 of them. Um, one was a violation of protection from abuse order. Three charges of drug possession, three charges of drug paraphernalia. Uh, through, uh, two charges of simple assault, one charge of recklessly endangering another person. One charge of harassment, two charges of disorderly conduct. One charge of use of tobacco on school property. One charge of criminal mischief, one charge of DUI, a charge of terroristic threats, charge of minor in possession of alcohol. Theft by unlawful taking, um, access device fraud, receiving stolen property, one charge of theft by deception. 105 charges of use of a criminal, of a communication facility device and one charge of dangerous burning. The other police activities for the month of April, the department conducted 199 traffic enforcement details. 97 traffic citations were issued, 203 traffic warnings were written, 25 school checks were conducted, 111 park checks. Officers participated or attended 229 hours of training. So far for the year, we're at 2,841 calls for service, 113 traffic accidents have been responded to. The department has recorded 109 offenses. Have filed 259 criminal charges and have participated or attended in 565 hours of training. And that would be your April 2024 activity report.
Have a comment. Um, excuse me. Two weeks ago, the township building property across the street, um, a door was left open, was, was closed, wasn't locked. And, uh, the wind blew it open. I got a, an alert from ADT, then I got a call from ADT, I called county radio, it was like 11:30 at night. Two of your officers has responded, did a great job, went through the building, secured it. Called me personally at home to say everything was under control and reset the alarm force. Well done.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
I'm glad they were able to, uh, assist in that way.
I think it was, uh, Sam and Nick.
Yes, it was.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
With that, with that said, I'd entertain a motion to approve the chief's report as presented.
I'll second that.
Um, call the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Have a good night.
Bye.
Next item is the joint rec authority report. I'll be giving the report and unfortunately we did not get the report written up, so I'll be giving a quick summary.
So, good evening, I'm Hal Schremer, I'm the chairman of the West Rock Hill Supervisors, but also the appointed member to, an appointed member to the Joint Rec Authority and vice chair for the Rec Authority. So the Joint Rec Authority met last Wednesday, May 1st. Usual stuff, roll, call to order, roll call, approval of minutes, approval of financials, we had a fair amount, fair number of people coming out. Uh, basically what we went over is we've updated our rules for rates and rules for parties, trying to simplify them so that we have more people available to come in and use the pool. For, without having to spend too much time trying to calculate how much it's going to cost and making sure that we still make a reasonable rate of return when we have people coming in. For small parties, for larger parties, for, uh, yeah, for an organization to come in, if you want to have your, you know, summer party over at the pool, we can accommodate that. Uh, we'll be working with Delaware, we had updates Delaware, Delaware Valley Day Camp, we're still looking at working with them, but it looks like it may take a little bit longer. We're updating our proper, our positions for swim badges and the membership IDs. We are also, uh, working on getting, sorry, then getting a, we're working on a craft fair, although we may end up pushing that back a little bit towards the end of the year because, uh, June, July, most crafters are not entrusted in being out in the hot sun. So we're looking more towards that, uh, more towards October, September, maybe October. Uh, fundraising continues to do good, we still have had a couple of fundrais, a couple of fundraisers, fundraisers even since then, including over at the Hickory Stick. We have pool preparation, we have a couple, a lot of things which have been accomplished, we had multiple, we had multiple cleanup days, we actually have our next and last cleanup day coming up this Saturday, the 18th, from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM. Uh, in the interim, since the, since the JRA meeting, we've actually started to patch and to paint the pool bottom so that that's coming along. We have some other patches coming in, uh, and I believe we should be getting the sign for the Hickory Stick, which is gonna be re, opening a branch location at Holiday House Snack Shop. So everybody who likes, so hopefully everybody who likes the ice cream from Hickory Stick and the snacks, we're hoping to be able to bring that up to Holiday House. This year so that people, not just from the pool, but you can also walk in from the outside if you're going by. Uh, we have a bunch of yard sides, yard signs going out, we didn't seem to have much coverage this year, but we're looking for anybody else that we can work with who might still have a sign to remind them to put it up, to put it out for us. Uh, for our new business, one of the things that we are moving forward in, forward with is updating payment previously, the, Holiday House Pool worked on a cash basis with a little cash box. I know because a bunch of times I'd have to run down to get change from Landis's because we're running out of $1 bills, so this year we're actually moving forward now to go with Venmo, Google Pay, PayPal so that, uh, we now are, a lot of people are working with a cashless society, so you'll be able to come in and get payments just for the day, or if you want to buy a pass, uh, walk right up. We did have a little bit of discussion on the marketing study, which was done and released by West Rock Hill Township. We reviewed a progress that we had for a prior fleet pool cleanup day on the 11th. And we are working with a couple of day camps, which are now also, uh, interested, who we had not worked with before, so it seems like we're getting more interest from a couple of the other local day camps. Uh, I believe that's pretty much everything that was discussed at the meeting and most of what has happened since then. If the board has any questions.
I do, um, excuse me, you had volunteers that have, um, applied to serve.
Yes.
For West Rock Hill to join you as our three representatives.
Yes, we have, we have two appointees who are, uh, who have volunteered to be appointed to the Joint Rec Authority.
Angela and Shelley, right?
Yep.
I, I met with them last week individually. And, uh, based on that, I would like to make a motion that we accept them as.
Representatives.
Representatives.
I'll second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Are there any other questions, comments on the parking rec report?
No, the only question, of course, I, I like to try to follow along on, on how you're doing with your fundraising. Do you have a dollar amount that, that you have acquired since you started the fundraising for the pool?
I can ask, our fundraiser chair is, and now new.
Uh, so far, uh, we have $6,762.13. And that is without, uh, last week's Hickory Stick and the other remaining fundraiser we have.
Very good, thank you.
And congratulations.
All right, we'd like, with that, I see Shelley's here, I don't know if Angela's here, but I'd like to welcome them, um, to the, um, Joint Rec Authority, and with that, I would like to, uh, I, I will make a motion to approve the parking rec report.
As I second.
Presented.
You mean the.
Or, I'm sorry.
Yes, I will second that.
I'll get it right.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commission. Okay, so after the Joint Rec Authority, we have our tax collector report from Suzanne Clark, who I do not see. So that's gonna be.
Yeah, so for the month of May, uh, Suzanne collected, our tax collector collected 404,555.87. It was a busy month.
With the discounts.
With the discounts.
Right.
The incentive. Okay, I have no questions?
I have no questions. I'll make a motion, we accept the report as, uh, presented by Mr. Lippincott.
Second then.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Then township manager's report.
No.
Sorry, sorry.
Engineer.
I'm, I'm sorry, hit the screen ahead.
It's okay.
It's a little longer. Mr. Bella.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Peter. Uh, so the item I have on, on the report is the County Lane Road Sewer Project. I don't believe anyone is here from upper borough authority. I had last minute to double check if anyone was coming, but I didn't get a response. Oh, sorry. Okay, I think this has been talked about, uh, at least in part in, in prior meetings when Telford first proposed, uh, this project. I think it's a project that the township has wanted for a long time. And that's to serve the, the Circle Drive Hidden Valley area of the township, so along County Lane Road. Uh, what they're proposing to do is install low pressure horse main, so grinder pumps on individual lots. And pump all the sewage up to an existing pump station they have up near, uh, we'll say up near the Wellington Village subdivision. So it would serve all the properties in East Rock Hill, on the East Rock Hill, uh, I'm sorry, West Rock Hill side of County Lane Road and the Franconia side of County Lane Road. A, a joint, joint project. And Franconia is going through the same approval processes that, that they're asking from West Rock Hill Township. So you could see the, the properties highlighted in yellow, those are the properties that would be served by the, the, uh, the project. So in total, there's 90 properties, uh, I believe it works out to be 48 of them are in West Rock Hill Township. The balance, uh, in Franconia Township. Uh, they did do a few alternate analysis with gravity sewer and other new pump stations and the most cost-effective uh, method that they determined was this low pressure sewer line project. So that's what we have before us, they had submitted the plans to the Township Planning Commission and Franconia Township Planning Commission for comment, they both received, uh, or received favorable comment from both municipalities. It's been sent to the County Planning Commission, who also had favorable, uh, and it was also advertised in the newspaper for public comment, which I don't think they've received any public comment, at least not in West Rock Hill Township. Uh, so the next, uh, stage in the approval process is this resolution that's in your package. Uh, so that, this resolution would adopt their special study as an amendment to the Township 537 Plan. And allow them to proceed with, proceed with this project. Right, so the, the resolution is just a general summary of the project, what streets are served, how many properties are there. At this point, they had estimated the project to be construction costs in the neighborhood of $3.18 million. Uh, to date, they've reported they received a grant for $268,000. So there's still a $2.9 million, uh, funding that that's required for the project. I assume if there's no further grants received, there'll be cost to the individual property owners for connection. My recollection was it was not mandatory connection, but there would be connections for failed systems and resale homes.
So I want to ask you a question about that. Because it's very important to taxpayers as far as mandatory connections and what it's gonna cost them to do something. Now, I believe this is the same plan that has been circulated since I was a planning commission member more than 18 years ago, is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, some version of it, yes.
Yes. So, and there's always been an issue of the funding and the money. Um, I would like to know, I mean, I, I agree that it needs to be done, that should be done, but I would like to know what it's gonna cost taxpayers, individual homeowners. I don't think you can answer that right.
Um, I, I could guess based on the numbers they gave us, but I would rather not give a definitive answer.
Okay.
I know that they're still trying to get grant funding. They understand the cost to the taxpayers, they understand to each homeowner what it's going to cost, so they're trying to get it less than a sand mound by securing more grant funding.
Well. Steve, do we know when they want to start this project or is this just?
Uh.
I mean, the purpose tonight, you're talking tonight is for us to adopt and approve the resolution, that, that's it for.
You would adopt and approve the resolution, which is a step needed for them to send it to DEP, for DEP to approve the amendment to the plan. After DEP approves the amendment to the plan, then they could go out the bid if they're ready to go out the bid.
This is the last stop for the board of supervisors.
Yeah, see, that's why I, I'm not, I need, I need to know what costs are gonna be before I give my approval on something that's gonna cost a homeowner money they don't have or unreasonable money, I don't, I think it's a fair request.
I understand your request and I could, Greg and I could get that information, I, I don't have it.
You say there, would it be worth having someone from the Telford Authority here to talk to us about this at the next meeting?
I know they know the board's position of that it cannot cost more than a sand mound. That has been relayed to them time and time again, that's why they're going for more grant funding. I don't know how we memorialize that.
Once the board votes on it, that, that's just talk that happened before the vote, board voted on it.
That's why I say, from my position, tell me what it's gonna cost before we vote.
Um, I'm sorry, I don't want to throw any monkey wrenches in, he, Greg loves when I do this. Sometimes when authorities want sewer extensions, they reach out to the neighbors and get and, and provide the board that has to make the decision on the five. the board that has to make the decision on the 537 amendment, information, here's the neighbors we reached out to, here are the ones that responded that they'd like to hook up to sewer, who's the ones that said, oh, no, never. And here are the ones that haven't answered us. And, and that's not bad information to have, or do you think you already have it, Greg?
I think it all depends on the cost. You're going to change your opinion based on cost.
We did that on Ridge Road, you remember, we did it on Ridge Road, we had letters sent, we had a meeting here. And we, and we had citizens express their concerns or issues or acceptance or whatever, and it was like almost 50/50. That, that wanted it. So I think, have these residents in this, that have these yellow highlights, have they been sent letters at all?
Yes.
Okay, and, and we have responses?
No.
No.
Because we don't know what the final cost is depending on the grants.
We got to know that. I think we got to know it from my perspective. We got to know what the cost is. Okay, so that's all I want to, that's a comment I want to make on that.
I have a similar concern that unfortunately it's a chicken egg, you don't know until you figure out the grants, you don't know how much the cost is going to be. And they're going, they want to get the approval so that they can out, go out to get more grants. But I think we do need to know, as I said, similar to what Jay said for Ridge Road, getting the feedback from neighbors. Because I think I did a quick check to see how many had been resold recently and may have had that, oh, we just put in a new sand mound and hell no, we're not doing this.
How many homes did you say there was there, 90?
Forty-five.
Ninety total.
Out of 90.
We have 48.
We have 48, okay, so do the simple math, or you could do the simple math, 90. 90, 90 divided by whatever they need, you said they had so much.
Math is about $32,000 per lot.
About $32,000.
But I don't know that there might not be other costs involved, that's why I don't want to commit to it.
I'd, I'd like to, I'd like to know if we could.
Certainly will ask.
Okay, thank you. Can we table this then until, till that?
I don't know with any time pressure.
There's, there's no, there's no time deadline for West Rock Hill till past the agenda. Obviously, they want to keep the project moving, but.
Sure.
No, but we have a lot of questions, we, we want to answer.
This has been moving for about 24 years.
Right.
What's the rush?
Yes, you have.
Did one of the plans.
Okay.
We'll, we'll relate that to, to the authority. And just, I think I said it before, but they're going through the same process in Franconia. I don't know what meeting they're going to in Franconia, but. So not on the agenda though, I do have one other topic as indicated under consent agenda, the action on plants about to expire. You might have seen on the plant status letter, of the select properties, Lawn Avenue Ridge Road Project, it's the project in the triangle between Ridge Road, bypass ramps and Lawn Avenue. LD 638 is their, their latest extension we have extending to June. I reached out to them to ask for another extension, I have not received a response to date. I think, thinking of the discussions with the solicitor, we should make a recommendation for a conditional denial, maybe give them opportunity or not.
The problem with giving him an opportunity is that if, whatever action the board takes tonight, I have to communicate within 15 days, or it's a deemed approval. And so if we give them a week, now I only have a week left to, and then, then it's, we give them a week and then I have to confirm with you whether or not we received it. And I, I sent an email to their solicitor as soon as the meeting started, telling them that they would likely be denied tonight. Sure, he doesn't sit in front of his email all night long, but I haven't heard back from him. So my recommendation would be to deny it, perhaps condition upon them getting it to you by the end of the day tomorrow. And not more than that. And the actual wording for the motion should be that the board move, makes a motion to deny the Heckler Select Ridge Road Property Plan for the reasons set forth in the review letter of Steve Bella dated. I had it a minute ago. Thanks for your patience, I'm sorry.
No worry.
There we go. Dated July 6, 2023. And the engineering detail review also dated July 6, 2023. Provided that if the applicant grants the township an extension of the required review period, no later than 5:00 PM on May 16. The will, the denial will be of no force or effect. You can just say so move.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Cheryl, you have that down, Greg?
Thank you. All right, well, we have two seconds, so we'll call the motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, that is all I have for my report unless there's any questions.
Not sure if procedurally we have to, but I guess I would make, entertain the motions and table the Act 537 Sewer Review for Circle Drive until we have more information from.
I thought I did that, but yes, okay. So you, let's make it official. Make a vote.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. And then dotting all the ayes and crossing all the t's. I will move to accept the engineer's report.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, then we turn back to Mr. Everly.
Oh, at the last meeting, Mr. Heckler's team came to the township for approval of the Forest Road Minor Subdivision. You reviewed it and authorized me to prepare a resolution granting conditional preliminary or preliminary slash final approval of that subdivision. The resolution's been circulated to the applicant who has agreed to the conditions. So if it is your wish to adopt it, which is my recommendation, you would make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2024-04.
I have no questions.
I, I won't make that motion.
I will second that we accept that.
Land Development 651, right?
Yep. Yeah, that's Resolution 2024-04. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's all I have this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, ma'am. Excuse me, township manager's report.
I'd like to first make a motion to accept Mary's, Mary's report as presented.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now we get to the.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, the first item is the 2024 paving request to advertise for bid. This year, I would recommend two bids, the first one being Old Mill Road between Forest Road and Bethlehem Pike. The reason being is that I would recommend that we do this one in, at night so that Wilcox could stay open. It also gives us more flexibility in our final results, whether you accept the bid or not, seeing what the cost is. The second bid for roads would be Maisy Road, that would be the primary with the two alternates being Thousand Acre and Augustine Roads. Seeing what the prices come in to see if it meets our budgeting. Those would be my two recommendations to go out for those two bids.
Okay, can I ask a question first? Because I, I travel the roads pretty much and, you know, I think I identified Augustine Road to you. If that, if Augustine Road would be paved at all, would the, would the pipes have to be addressed first? There, there's some pipes that are individual pipes where that, where it's actually deteriorating the road because the pipe is clogged on the property owner's property.
They were just replaced.
They were replaced, okay. So that, that was a question mine because in the last flood storm we had, I, I drove down that road and the water was actually running down the road and not in the ditch.
That was replaced a week or two ago.
Okay, thank you. Very good.
I guess I have a similar question because as I recall, we do have a land development proposed for Augustine. How are we going to be tearing up the newly paved area if somebody's coming in?
I, I think there would be a long time before that goes, that goes in. They have water and sewer issues, I don't think will be resolved in the near future.
And this, if we were to, to vote on the, on the going out for bids, it doesn't mean that we, we have to do everything, right?
No, you, we're going to get the bid results and then you decide.
Decide how much money we have and how much we want to spend.
And how much you want to do. And, and that's why it's broken up into two bids.
Well, I think you presented it well, thank you.
I have no questions.
I have one question, Augustine Road, so what's the status of the pipe work? Is it, it's still, still done or it's done?
It's completed.
Okay.
So we can move forward on that.
All right.
Some of the other roads that we were considering was Lower Rockydale and Upper Rockydale Road.
Right.
In the previous month, that pipe did not make the bids, therefore it was pulled off the road paving. Most likely lower and upper Rockydale Road, we'll get a pipe next year and we'll pave it.
It will move up on the list then.
Up on.
Okay. I haven't left for other questions, so I would interlocute.
I, I will make the motion, I will make that motion.
To approve the two.
To, to, to put out for bid.
Right.
Correct.
I will second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
The next item is part of the budgeting process, we put in our budget for a new backhoe. Township has identified a Case 580 and a Case 590 as the preferred backhoe. What we've done in the past to purchase equipment is we've borrowed money from our reserves and paid it back over time with the equipment fund. That way we don't have to borrow money from a bank or go out to, to a bank or anything. So the price consideration for the Case 590 is $186,738.14. That is Co-Stars pricing, so we would not have to go to out the bid. The 580 is $175,000, $11,000 less. We recommend selling the John Deere. We figure between $40,000 and $60,000. And the reason why we're recommending to get rid of the John Deere is it's harder to get parts, they're no longer servicing that machine compared to a case where we still get the parts even for our 1990s.
I have a question regarding that because the John Deere was very well thought out when we bought that.
Correct.
It has a knuckle boom that can be used to clean ditches out. Does the case have the same thing, capabilities?
I can make sure of that, I believe it does, but I can go back and double check.
Okay, because if it doesn't, there's no sense in discussing it because we need to be able to clean the ditches out. We can't afford to have a grade all, to rent a grade all, remember the money we were spending renting a grade all every year to clean ditches out in this township? If you don't remember, I do.
That was before me, that was, because we got the John Deere my first.
Right, that was the reason we were sold on, from Public Works to buy a John Deere with a, with a articulating boom, knuckle boom. Okay, so that being said, if you are going to borrow the money from the reserves and pay it back, I don't see that it's a bad idea. If you are going to also sell that John Deere, I would support it. But I would like to make sure that you have that confirmation.
No, I pretty much agree that we want to make sure that it works for, that it has the special features that we needed for the one that we got, even though it's now getting impossible to fix.
It just takes a long time to get ours.
So you're saying the issue with the John Deere is, it's a good machine, but we just can't get parts for it if it breaks.
Correct. Compared to the case.
We have an older case that we can still get parts for.
Correct.
Case seems to be the backhoe of choice for most of the surrounding townships too, right? It's what I see.
Yes.
Most everywhere.
I don't like it personally because it's four sticks, but that's me.
It's not a decision we're making tonight anyway, it's just, this is.
It, it's part of the budget process, we're going through things that, that we want to accomplish in 2024 and it's.
And I think that's probably a pretty thick packet that we were given that we haven't all digested yet on this. A lot of eight by 10 glossy's and things like that, right?
Right. So, but I can get those answers, and if you have any more questions over the month, I will gladly get the answers for you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Greg.
The next item is the Holiday House Viability Summary. Does the board want to put any ballot questions on? We've had a month to go over the market study. In the market study, it came out to say it has been a well taken care of pool. However, it's 54 years into it, it's nearing the end of its life cycle, it probably has five to six more years before something goes wrong that's going to be quite expensive, not knowing what that item is. They gave some future financial considerations such as renovations costing from one to $3 million, focusing on the infrastructure of the pool in the filtration system, or a total replacement of the pool, which would cost seven to $10 million. To, that would cost the board anywhere from two mils of real estate tax over 30 years to 5.5, if you did the full and split it with Sellersville's.
Say it again.
5.5 mils over 30 years. If Sellersville was agreeable to split it, if the board took it all on itself, it would be 11 mils over 30 years.
We don't know where Sellersville stands on this, right?
No, I brought this to the board for the direction from the Board of Supervisors.
But we have released the report that we, that's public information.
Yeah.
It's on our website.
Yep.
Sellersville should have it.
I, I believe they do.
I'd like to make a suggestion that we ask Greg to, to meet with Sellersville and see what they think. See what their view is on, on this situation.
Totally agree, got to know what Sellersville thinks. We're, we're not in this by ourselves. And it's a big decision, a lot of money. We're not saying we're moving forward, but we at least have to have that discussion. Mr. Joint Rec?
I agree, the one, one of the things which, as I said, going through all the history and going through the binder of all, the folder of all the Holiday House records going back to 67 was looking at how this was initially funded, which made some sense then, okay, initially it was, the authority was created to float a municipal bond. Then they realized you have a pool, you don't have a sewer authority, you can't guarantee income. So Township and the Borough both started making rental payments where Township and Borough both leased Holiday House so that we had rental income in order to float the bond, which they then refinanced and had to do a couple of changes. But unfortunately, that went until, essentially that went for about 30 years and then from both municipalities, I think the feeling was like when you buy a house, hooray, the mortgage paid off, like yes, but now I've got a 30-year-old pool. And we've continued to make the funding, but we haven't had the funding going out to get a big bond issue because you can get a lump sum upfront for more than you can for the, or even, so you can leverage the money to fix a lot of stuff now for the same month, for the same annual expense, but it's been, I think since 19, about 1990 is when that finally, sorry, 19, 1995 to 2000, when that really came through. That's when we really started looking at other funding sources, working with the YMCA, daycare, and none of those really took hold to make the pool self-sufficient. So now we're back to reviewing all the different ways that we chose to fund the pool in the beginning. So that's helped to, that helped a lot of people understand how did we get here. Same thing, you paid off the mortgage, but you still need to do repairs on the house. And sometimes you need to get a second mortgage on, or you need to get HELOC on the house in order to fund everything. So I don't have any other questions, but yeah, that sounds like a good idea to leverage funding what we did a bit initially. And I don't have any further questions. Correct. Yes.
Hopefully you can come back to us in the next meeting. Hopefully you can come back to us in the next meeting.
Yes, I will. That's all I have.
Okay. Entertaining the motion to approve the township manager's report.
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Next item for the agenda is old business. I do not have any, anybody else?
I have one thing. Sometime ago, we've talked about dead ash trees in in on private properties close to roads. And we we I believe we put it in the newsletter at one time about people's responsibilities. Is that correct?
I believe so, yes.
Okay, so I've been driving around the township and I've been seeing a lot of these trees. And a lot of these trees are on people's properties that are dead and they're they're being neglected and then becomes a township problem when they fall on the roadway. Is there a possibility that we can send letters to property owners that have issues that to try and prevent a catastrophe or a problem in the future?
Absolutely. We've sent out letters to people on Allentown Road. I sent out letters to people on Simmons and Branch Road. PennDOT sent out a letter to someone on Allentown Road. Yeah, when we become aware of them, we send out letters.
Okay.
If it's near a wire on PP&amp;L or close to it, we notify PP&amp;L.
That's a proper step.
Yep.
Thank you. That's all I have on your old business report right now.
Good.
All right. Any new business?
I have no new business right now.
I have none.
I have none. Okay, so we open up our next point is opening up for public comment. Make sure that you up, excuse me, we'll make sure you up to the microphone so we can hear you.
Kelly Fox, Holiday House Road. Just a little confused on the water line or what's going up county line and going all the way out to Augustine? Nothing? I'm just a little confused. Are they opening up the Ridge Road at all? Because at one time they were talking about just shutting one lane down.
You want me to answer? Two separate projects. The project that was talked about last month with North Penn Water Authority is the water line only along Ridge Road, the transmission line. What we talked about tonight is totally separate, only has to do with Tupperboro Authority down along County Line.
Okay, so no sewers coming up, but okay, so then as old business, do I talk about the water line going in the Ridge Road? It seems like the board is worried about ripping up roads that have just been done, but yet they're going to tear up the Ridge Road all the way down at a point. That was the last meeting they were talking about. And then have it one way when it's a pretty nice road and they don't really need that water line yet.
We haven't heard back from them yet, have we?
Yeah, they agreed to do a full overlay.
Oh, they did?
Ridge Road.
Okay.
And I'm not sure if we meant, I just, I know there were a couple of people had the same question, but I remember there is a 20 North Penn Water Authority, when they first came through looking for water access, did present a study of the flowage to the top of Hospital Hill. When you come up Long Avenue, once you get above 711, which is the small, the the small doctors, they came up with numbers, they were several hundreds to several thousand gallons below the peak firefighting firefighting flow that they would like to have so that all if there was a fire or any if they had a product, if they had a fire at the new hospital, they want to make sure they have enough water being able to flow into it. So that was the initial push for finding a water tower over here, perhaps behind the West Rock Hill Elementary. And then this is another way of providing water to make sure they have enough for all their services. So that was part of the reason why we've been looking at, they'd brought that to us almost two years ago. Was they wanted a water tower and they wanted to have a pipeline to hook up to the water tower so that they'd have plenty because right now they have, I believe they're fed from wells in Sellersville set up. Any other public comments, sorry?
I have a comment. I'll just clarify some things. Um, when Dan was here last month and talked, I really feel that there's a need for him to have a meeting with the township residents specifically about the project, the transmission line coming up Ridge Road. And it's it's a transmission line for water. No one has said anything about sewers. And and I, a lot of people have issues with what it might mean in the future. And I think if North Penn met with the residents in a private, separate meeting, just air it out, let them know what they what's going on and the residents can do the same.
I think it's a great idea. And I actually know because I saw him out in the parking lot after the meeting that he would be willing to to talk and answer any questions that people may have. So I think that's a good request, Mr. Collingwood.
Thank you.
Yes, Don Krauthemo with the Joint Rec Authority. First, I want to say I'm really appreciative of the offer to sit down with Sellersville to discuss the whole Holiday House issue. I think that's that's a great idea and I appreciate it. I do have one concern with regards to relying on this market study. I felt that the market study was fairly well done. I did not find too much to to differ with it on. On the issue of the life expectancy, I think that could be argued. I grew up at Fannie Chapman Pool. That pool was 30 years old 70 years ago when I was swimming there. And when I was a teenager there, which was more than 20 years ago, that they built a new pool and that both of those pools are still in excellent condition. Now, obviously, there's a lot of differences between Fannie Chapman and Holiday House. But the point being is, yes, there are major expenses that are going to come up, but I don't think we should necessarily accept the the judgment that it is at end of life. That being said, the estimates that they gave in that marketing study were very broad estimates indeed, as I think you would agree. I think that the the marketing study that was done is one piece of a larger study that should ideally be done. And that is a feasibility study that we've been attempting to get funding for for the last two years. The feasibility study, in addition to looking at all of the demographics and the marketing components that your study looked at, would also provide would would provide a more detailed analysis of the entire facility, grounds, buildings, the pool, all of that. And they would provide a prioritized list of specifically what needs to be addressed. And it would provide several different strategies as to how best to address those needs. What can be done in year one while the pool is still functioning? What needs to be done in a year when the pool is shut down and major work being done?
Two and a half minutes, sir.
The other thing it would provide would be a rationale and a strategy for funding all of these improvements, which the marketing study did not provide. And finally, this is going to require multiple revenue sources, not just a loan or probably a bond issue. There are large funds available through organizations like DCNR. And we know from experience that they require this kind of a feasibility study. So I'm only mentioning this for you to give it some thought. We'll be happy to continue this discussion with with the borough. But I do think that there is another step that we need to go through before we come to any decision. Thank you.
Hello, Arthur Ketterer, 31 Augustine Road Surfboard Guy, the pipe, me. I enjoyed that though, you know, surfboard. Anyway, that's all done. It's for my buddy. Arms Armed Service Day is May 18th. And Armed Service Day is when you put gratitude to people in. Memorial Day is coming up the end of the month, and that's where you show respect for people who have fought. And Veterans Day is for showing gratitude for people that weren't. So that's where my people that flag your flag, fly your flags if you have. So respect why we're here doing this before we're out there in the sand, dirt, mud, not having fun. So that's that. And question is on that May 8th letter for the grant for North Penn. Did that get done, approved by you guys?
Yes.
Cool.
They agreed to fully overlay and what the.
Yeah.
Fully overlay that. And so what they were doing is they're getting a loan based off of that.
Yeah, five million or something.
Yeah. They have the right to run the line because it's a transmission line and we can't stop a utility.
Put it where you wanted, both lanes, right, both sides. That's awesome. All right, that's all. Thanks so much.
Don White. So this month, I mean, I have something kind of off the wall to talk about. You know, we constantly hear from a lot of people in government that they hate socialism and they hate government regulation, can't stand it, hate it, it's on and on endless. Zoning is socialism. There's no question about that. And there's a ton of regulation that goes along with that. You know, we're controlling everything in this township with our zoning. So you're probably saying, well, you know, why is Don White even care about this? My son, who was a captain in the United States military, you know, he's there protecting our liberty and freedom. I own 16 acres of property in West Rock Hill Township. He can't build on my property. Not allowed. The socialist zoning and overregulation of West Rock Hill Township forbids it. There are flag lots all over this township. There are lane lots all over this township, dozens and dozens of them. But he's not allowed to do it. I just don't understand, you know, a lot of people talk about wanting free markets to control things, and this is in free markets. A lot of communities in PA have no zoning. The city of Houston, Texas has no zoning, none. I just don't get it. Socialist zoning, we're way overboard with it. The only other thing I have is so there's still no public discussion on the $500,000 of Joe Biden's money that we're going to spend in this community. And I would like to once again say, please do the right thing and support our fire companies. Thank you.
Okay, another public comment? Going once, going twice, going three times. Okay, thank you. Public comment closed.
I will make a motion to to move into executive session for real estate, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Thank you all. Public publics. The public meeting is now closed.
Thank you for your comments. So that's the problem. And I think they're finally tied up. You guys need to do all the ditch improvement.
But I know when we're going to.
You don't have to reoverlay, right? You have no damage.
What is the enemy? What is the enemy?
Time to go to the county town. Yeah, it's back and forth because they insist on paving.
That one or that one?
Parking lots, putting gravel. And they got a flood and they just paved the parking lot and parking lot.
Thank you.
Lifted up.
Thank you. Twenty trillion. I appreciate that.
Well, it's way down, right down for the middle of the South.
Thank you.
Whole one, did you do that? We didn't hit stop on there. Only guy did what they had to do.